Okay. Okay, so I need a motion to approve D1, D2, sorry. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstention. Okay, for curriculum. I need a motion to approve E1 through 4. Four on the board. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstention. Okay, I need a motion to approve F1 and 2. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
We're next.
Abstention. I need a motion to approve F3. Nailing that the purpose of this resolution is not to outsource. This is for positions that we cannot fill in the House, and it is in the best interest of the children to do so. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Okay, now I need a motion to approve F4 and 5. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstention. I need a motion to approve E1 through...
You're gonna take that money out of the paraprofessional's pocket before you give it to a third party.
Discussion?
Can we please stop interrupting the meeting?
No. We never got to ask them. You're all up for reelection at some point.
Thank you, ma'am.
Well, make sure you don't see it again. Exactly. We'll respect you the same way.
Thank you for being respectful of the Board of Education.
You don't respect us, regardless of what you say.
I need a motion to approve G1, sorry guys. Discussion? All in favor?
My rock.
Abstention. You need to send your personnel on your agendas. I need a motion to approve I. 1 through...
Yeah, they voted it in.
9?
Employing more...
I'm sorry, 1 through 17. So I would like a motion to approve...
Someone who worked $13 an hour, but paid $18...
I, 1 through 17. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstention. We're on the agenda personnel letter I.
I'm items of personnel in this month of 17.
How you doing? Me too.
Mr. Dolan? Mr. Dolan?
Yes. Could you please close your voices down? The Board is still conducting business. Would you please be respectful of the business being conducted? If you want to talk, please go outside. Thank you so much.
The reason that the video can't be heard if there's talking in the back room. We've just been informed by Mr. Austin. So please step outside if you're gonna continue to talk. Thank you.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Stella?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Moving on to old business. Okay, moving on to new business.
Just on old business, we had talked about last week. Putting together some sort of approach and decide on which committee to assign the investigation into, well, not the definition, but the inquiry into how to reach out to those businesses with scholarship monies and other financial support. Particularly on the past, we've seen a number of businesses support schools. I know that Misses Newgories attended, funded, has a value to it in the street area. And Islands, I know that the residents of Little Town residence and the youth and school are very supportive of us. So I think it would be very beneficial to assign to one of our committees the task of coming up with an outreach plan on behalf of the Board and the community of these businesses. So I would love to share my experience with this.
Yeah, I had this conversation briefly with Dr. George about the Scholarship Committee taking over that responsibility. And he said he thought around September would be a good time of year to bring that up. People are excited about the start of the school year, and maybe businesses would be excited to give some money to the Scholarship Plan.
My only comment to that would be that maybe instead of September, I don't want to do anything concerning, but I think that it would be useful to get on top of that. And especially now that we're going back to reach out to some of the larger employers in the country, including, most importantly, St. Mary's. So we could get someone or more, especially here with their mission. And I know that it impacts a number of our budgetary.
And just to clarify, that's exactly what I said, but to clarify my intention. I just want to say that I think that certainly gets better from now to the end of the year. I'll offer myself, the Scholarship Committee, and talk about what we're gonna do. My point was to kick off our campaign in September. But to your point that you hit on well, we gotta be ready to roll. It's not that we're wrong to roll up our sleeves sooner. It's just that my thought for the kickoff of the campaign was September, because we could also maybe build that with our PFA's. We could sell the pick. We could, you know, just get there right from the beginning of the school year. Get momentum.
Is this just for scholarships?
It's for the scholarships for graduation export.
That's all I was gonna say. ECA, we have them at 17 junior schools. They all do different drop schools and stuff. So need to be careful with this stuff. Not to say get them up, but a lot of these organizations contribute to all the schools. They spend a lot of money.
I think we're missing a vote by waiting for August, because this is the time of the year where donations slow down because it's coming to the end of the year. Come June, everybody hits everybody. Because I've done it before, I think we're waiting a little bit too long. If we really want to get them to do it, we gotta get them to do it now in their fiscal year. Otherwise, we're gonna miss the votes with all the other competitions.
I also think we need to reach out to some, whoever's reaching out to some. We should reach out to some of the work-study programs. Lock it, because it's a big IT facility. They have them there. They hold all their IT out there. So wait with you and IT doing some of the offers. Maybe they can take something there.
That's a good idea. No, that's great. And you're on the Scholarship Committee, so we'll get together and chat.
I think that was our thought, our job to go. But I don't think we're allowed to get too much.
I always hear what you're saying. Right.
They know, you know, your children might not be able to do stuff. You can't do that.
So this is what I'm talking about, politics. We'll be ready for all business. I was gonna say, we can just put this back on old business for the next year. Careful. New Jersey School scores. The other people. Talked about it. You're speaking out with us. And I think that's a big conversation.
I'd like to do that statement. I was expecting that our work ethic is important. This week, the principals have been coming to meet with the curriculum department and student activities services to talk about their needs at schools and starting to normalize and generate ideas to work with their staff on reading action plans in just the areas that we are not satisfied with.
Okay, does anyone else have any new business?
Yes, I hope everybody goes out. And High School North is having a play this weekend. Friday night at 7:00 and Saturday at 2:00. So if you're looking for some good nights out, entertainment, it's really good. I saw a little bit of the previews. I don't think anybody's gonna wanna miss it. Take your kids, your families, and support the arts at High School North.
Want their new business out?
Thanks. New business?
Yeah, I just wanted, we were doing the adoptive school. I went to that link croft for their last meeting last week. A lot of things going on at Link Croft. You know, the Daddy Go To Dance, Augustland Carnival's coming up. They have a ride show coming up. Couple of interesting, you know, very interesting things. You know, one of the, couple of things I felt were really, really cool. There are three students who read the bracelet. That they're gonna sell the school score, and they're gonna donate to Make the Wish on It. Yeah, it's fantastic. You know, their school raised a thousand dollars. Another thing I linked up that I think is very interesting is that they've posted their, what they call a floor print. It's their student papers, like student journals, student papers on their website. I would encourage people to go to their website, take a look at that. It's a lot of work, so yeah, it would be great if a lot of schools could start doing that again. I know schools have done it on and off, paid a lot of dedication from the education front and as a follow-up. But called the floor print, excellent. Fairview, I'm also, I'll cover Fairview. They had their gift auction recently. And they moved on, their first gift auction was a pretty, pretty good success. They wanted to thank Cam Nitti with her donation. You know, part of the Fairview family. And they appreciate that. And you know, Fairview's moving along. You know, my kids are there, so it makes like regular business. But check out the floor print on Link Croft as well. It's on their website, it's really, it's really good.
Thanks.
Just along the adoptive school line, I know the scheduling was bad for tonight and tomorrow. Thompson Middle School play is happening after school. There's one performance. We have the director of the play, also has the daughter of one of our board members. I would encourage anybody after school who's able to attend, unfortunately not, but I think it's useful to make sure the public is aware that this is going on at Thompson Middle School.
I saw that online. Isn't there a better way that we could advertise some of this stuff? Like, if I didn't see it on Twitter, I wouldn't even know it's taking place. And there's a lot of the arts things that we're missing, because we don't know it's taking place. And, you know, a lot of us like to go. We can't go to everything, but try to go to them. But sometimes it's just, we see it when it's too late. You know, I mean, maybe you could talk to Mr. Graziano and somehow get us a list of things that are going on the arts, because we can't promote it if we don't know it's taking place.
I agree, Jim. Because, you know, for my two schools, Thompson and South, I have the PFA newsletters that come in in my email box, and I can read them. But it's hard to sort of put everything together. So I agree that would be useful to maybe a district wide arts calendar would be helpful.
Sharing with me.
Because he has to arrange to make sure there's, you know, not conflict.
Overlaps it. Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Adoptive school or new business? Okay, I'd like to open up the microphone to public comments. Remember that we do have a limit to 30 minutes, and you do have a limit for three minutes each. But we would like to hear from you, as many of you as possible. Come on up.
If there are others, if you were to come up to the mic, it would just maximize the opportunity for people to speak, and that really is our intention. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christine. I was in the paraprofessional at New Monarch for 15 years. 13 of which have been full-time. And this is directly to you, Dr. George, because you are the leader of this school district. This year, after 13 years of full-time employment, always having a proactive attitude towards personal development, attending all the in-services, getting thoroughly trained in every aspect of our job so we can do a better job providing services. I got my hours cut by 40%. With that said, you have a standing problem. We were told, when our hours were cut, that if we came in to help fill some of that need, that we would be paid sub rate. That was missing, because I, all of my colleagues that had those one-day cuts, we probably would have been going on A-SOC. We probably would have been bidding on those little spots that you needed to fill. I had signed up with my principal that I would be willing to go on the sub list. Out of principle and respect for myself, my service, my training, my professionalism, dedication to this school district, I did sub one day. I'm thankful that I didn't need to sub a day, but I will not work for $7 an hour less than what I should be getting. Actually, look, I am only working three days a week now. You got a person sitting home, also going on walks with Roman County Park System now. I signed up for an ice cream plate thing this week. So I'm not just sitting around and finding things to do. You got a, you got a lot of people here, trained people. Fill your 18 spots. Fill your nine spots on Thursday. Fill all your spots. Pay us what we deserve. Pay us our rate. Watch me. Solid by paying us what we deserve.
While we're waiting the next speaker to approach, as one of managed expectations, there are some comments or questions that are made that the Board, the administration, and our Board will not respond to upon the advice of council if they apply to individual personnel situations. You're more than welcome to reach out to administration, schedule meeting personally, discuss your individual needs, but also issues that affect the collective bargaining process, issues of negotiations. The Public Employer Relations Commission recognizes the privacy of those matters, and the Board will not reduce itself to negotiating issues in public that are appropriately and legally required to be negotiated in a confidential setting. And I see Mr. Austin rewarding it back. I'm sure he would agree with me. So thank you.
Tilt the mic, raise your hand.
I'm a parent.
A lot of fun.
Okay, is that it?
Yeah, could you, Ms. Calvert, let's just use your...
It's fine. My name is Jenadell Sorti. I'm a parent. I was just, had a question. The way it's written and your intentions seem to be two different things. So if you voted on something that is written, and, but your intention is different from the way it's written, what's gonna happen now? That you voted on it, you passed it. Are you just using it for the subs? That's the question. Nobody knows the answer, because you're saying your intention and the way it was written. What's the answer? Nobody understands what's happening.
It says regular position.
You're not telling anybody what's really gonna happen. You're saying how it's written and your intention of outsourcing are two different things. So can you please explain what's gonna happen now that you voted on it?
Just, ma'am, so generally make your comments, ask your questions.
You did.
There was a question. It is a question. It is a question. Let them answer your question.
We'll be here all night if we respond to each individual question. Use your three minutes, ask your questions, make your statements.
He's not answering.
My name is Smiggy Dolly. I actually had a very similar question as the woman performing. Do you use the word intention? Why not use the words "will not"? And then if you decide another time you need to, that's up for the next time you take a vote. Using the word intention does not mean you will not. It means that you didn't intend to. And it's not saying no, you will not. So I request that you read both with the proper wording of "will not". Thank you.
So, Dr. George, you were saying that there are some positions that cannot be filled. That's what this is all about. Anita Clark, paraprofessional. Taxpayer. Yeah, that's my favorite one. So you're saying that the positions that cannot be filled. But there are a lot of parents that work anywhere for two hours to four hours per week. So I don't understand how, if you get the paraprofessional to come from a place like Moess, they're willing to work here, doing the same job for $12, when they could just be coming to Middletown and being hired the way we are and getting $18. Like, who would do that? So you're having a problem filling those positions paying $18, but you're not gonna have a problem filling them for 12? That's, it's just really hard to understand. So why would you go through a third party? Because most of the people that work as paraprofessionals are community members. People who voted you all in. So why would you take it out of their pocket? Why would I want to go to Moess and have them pay me $13 an hour to come here to do the job I was getting $18 an hour for? It just doesn't make sense, does it? You still need employees. Just hire more. That's an idea.
Hi. Vera Pasake, parent, taxpayer. I wasn't gonna speak, but as a parent of a child that needs a one-to-one parent, she will be transitioning to a new school next year. I am not worried about the teachers. Seven teachers she will be seeing, rotating through. I am worried about who's gonna be her parent. It is critical. And I hear these ladies, but I need you guys to understand, these parents, her parents, they are lifesavers. She goes to school every day. She's communication and parent. I don't worry, because I know who's with her. I'm already losing sleep about next year, because I have no sense of decision-making, and I have to trust that the decision will be right. Okay? I've asked if she can make the parent before it starts? No. No. It's, that is the person that's gonna be with her all the hours of her day. So as I sit here and listen, I think you guys need to understand again how critical they are. I'm not involved in the negotiation, but I have to say, as a taxpayer and a parent, sitting here listening to somebody with 15 years' experience, who's paid a certain rate, but if they sub, they have to take a cut in the rate? Something's not right there. And, and, so here, maybe everybody isn't speaking eloquently, or whatever, but their passion is clear. And I just hope we do what's right, because when it comes to saving money, we don't wanna save money on their backs.
Amen.
We don't. And I was thinking that maybe we could look at other aspects. And, and I will talk in generalities, and I think you need to look at your legal expenses. And the willingness to spend $50,000 to $100,000 to keep one child out of a gen ed classroom? It's ridiculous. So I would suggest that we do our best and keep these ladies and gentlemen. Sorry.
My name's Al Riccardo. I'm a taxpayer here in the state of Nevada. And our two sons are all autistic. Before our one son Max came to this school district, he would stay in his room every day. He would just eat oatmeal cereal every day and wouldn't do anything else. Wouldn't socialize or try to even be with us or his parents or his brother or anything. Me and my wife moved here because where we both live, we'd be down the middle of Middletown. And moved here, because we looked around and saw that this school district was that school district for us. Because we looked at the parents and seen that there's enough parents to take care of their needs to do what they need to do. Because it's not easy for me. I'm a master heating and air contractor. I'm licensed. I've worked for a company six years, and I lost my job. And I can see all these people, they lose their jobs because of money. It's, it's not about money. If you guys had a child like mine or any of these other parents, then you would understand. Until you guys are in their shoes, you shouldn't be putting money on them. How can you put money on your own kid, leaving him in the hands of somebody you don't know? Can you do that? Our son now eats everything he wants. Everybody knows my children, because they're all so loving to him. And he looks forward to them every day. I'm actually one of those. He can't talk, he's nonverbal, eight years old. We can't just leave our child with someone at all. That's why I have to say, you can't trust anybody. But I know that when they go to school with us, we can trust them. That they're coming home happy. They're not like the usual today. So until you guys have been in my shoes or one of their shoes, then you guys should try to put a number on it. You don't build a house and leave out 10 two-bucks worth, because you're cheap. They built the foundation. For our sons, they grow, and he's grown because of them. Because they love him. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mary Pat Harrington. I am a teacher in the district. I'm a teacher of the deaf and assigned language teacher. I am also a parent. I'm a student in the district, and two of them graduated. And I am also a taxpayer. I am speaking on behalf of the incredible people that I work with each and every day. I travel to eight schools a week, sometimes two. I go two times to some schools. I teach groups. I work individually with students who have one-to-one parents or shared parents. I meet dozens and dozens of paraprofessionals every week. I am privileged to be with them. I learn from the teachers who teach the class. I learn from the paraprofessionals who teach the students. I walk in, and if I see a substitute paraprofessional sitting with a child who's nonverbal, who has autism, and is using, is using an iPad to communicate, my first instinct is, "Ooh." She may not know him, but I know him, because the parents in that room have taught me over and over again about that child. The teachers have taught me about that child. But I know that I can depend on the paraprofessionals to guide me in working with my hundreds of students that I see every week. These people are incredible at what they do. They love their children. They stand up for them. They stand up for them. I may give a certain prompt, and I just get a little prompt with a head nod or a point or a, Mary Pat, you try this. And I am able to communicate with my students. I have been educated by these men and women, by these paraprofessionals. I value their work, I value their opinion, and I value their educational behavior. I beg of you to keep the wonderful people that we have and to use the services that are already working, use the people who are working three hours a week and could be working another day or other hours with the students who they know. Please take that into consideration. We have value here. We have people who care. We have good educators. Please use them. Thank you.
Does the boy know what this is? If you don't, you don't know your specialized students.
My name is Mary Pat, I've been a substitute teacher and I've been a parent of this district over 17, 18 years. We had a title years ago, maybe some of you do not know it, soccer moms. Not many of you could do what a soccer mom could do. And these ladies, I give them 250% credit when I have met, when I have been a substitute teacher. I have watched some of these children grow, from little babies, some infants, to the Ziegler son out in the workforce. And I know my children. Nobody knows my name, and I don't need to have anyone know my name, but I do a damn good job as much as all these ladies do. I have a degree. I was without a job for two years as a parent. And I understand that sometimes, you know? But you look for people with degrees, I have a degree. I don't boast it, I don't throw it in anyone's face. These children we work with, we work from the heart. I've never made money in Middletown, never gonna make money in Middletown as a substitute teacher, I have a parent. My choice. My children are well-grounded, 13, 14 years I stayed home with them. Harmony, born in York, they had a wonderful education. My daughter went to college, she took two years to work, she's in nursing school now. She's a North graduate, right on. So again, whatever you choose to do, whatever you choose not to do, we deserve better. We deserve respect, we deserve recognition for what we do. We don't look for it, but we deserve it. And I've been out of due time to share Thompson due to my mother's health at 83 years old and other concerns in my life. I have yet to been a substitute for myself. Nobody wants to work at 1350 times three or four hours a day. Come on. I don't make $42 a day, $39.50 a day, and maybe $76 when you take all your taxes and funds out. There's gotta be a better solution, even flat fee as a sub parent. I don't know what to say, but again, these ladies and gentlemen are wonderful and our kids we work with are the best. Thank you.
You know, part of our reputation in Middletown, I mean, we have a great reputation for having a great specialized program. I mean, that's, if you've seen an increase in enrollment, that's, that's us. That's us. And the decrease in your regular end, and frankly, like, you know, I don't know what's happening in regular end, I can't speak to that, but I can tell you that your increase in specialized is right here in this room. You know, and I know that when I, when I moved to this district, my son, my oldest son, he went to high school south, he ended up in the National Honor Society, he has special needs, but, you know, Dr. Cartier was a teacher then, head of the honor society, and, you know, and through, through the great specialized program, my son prospered in this, all my sons prospered in this district. But don't say you respect us and then vote the way you just did. That's, that's not, that's not, that's dishonest. And don't, please don't say so, and notify us four weeks ahead of time. We found out last Tuesday that this was gonna be an issue for us. We're very disappointed.
Hi, I'm Kelly D'Angelo, I just have a question pertaining to the sub-paras, because those of us who had our hours cut and we were put on, as somebody said, the sub-list, but all those sub-lists were deleted, we no longer allowed to do that. So my question to you is, and as a matter of fact, I'm trying to think of, that might have been maybe three weeks ago or a month ago, why, why I had, I was out, I, I, it's like a substitution, they believe I can. So I don't understand that either. So that's a question that I hope somebody can answer, because, as a member of the state of this, your intent is to sub, use this outsourcing for subs, when, again, I am reiterating, that some of these women here and then were very willing to, some not, at the sub rate, some would, and I'd like to, I'd like to answer to ask why those accounts were then deleted. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Darryl Reynolds, I'm a new monarch elementary teacher. I started on the autism program in 1994 under Marilyn Cohen. This is my colleague Jill Harris. Jill is a paraprofessional of mine when, my second year here in Middletown. We have one question that we know we won't be answering, but we hope that you will think about it, because we don't understand. The last, the last, one of the last statements, it says, paraprofessionals and secretaries and regular paraprofessionals assignments. Regular. These are regular to us on a daily basis. There are regular people. So what we're concerned is that regular is gonna be outsourced at some point in time. Might not be next year, might not be the following year, but I still have many years here. And I don't need my regulars to go if they're not ready to go, because they stand behind us on a daily basis and they do a job that not many people want to do, but they do it with passion, love, and consistency. We also, we also, I'd like to caution you that even filling a substitute with an outsourcer, you're just giving us a body. Where's your training? That person's gonna have to come into my classroom to understand ABA, a child who's not, does not speak, an AAC device, a child who uses sign language, a child who's tantruming on the floor, banging his head. And as a behavior plan that needs to be implemented, who's going to implement that behavior plan? A substitute is not going to. So we're concerned that regular and sub is gonna somehow become one at some point in time. And we just caution you that, that, that's not what this program was built on. This program is built on a teacher and paraprofessionals to make a class run. They've heard, and a team, we are a team and we're a unit on a daily basis. Many of them have heard that you sit around doing nothing all day. They don't sit around doing nothing all day. They take data on a daily basis, they take not only data in a one-to-one setting or a two-to-one setting, they take toileting data, they take behavioral data. They can speak to their children on a daily basis. So we're just concerned, once again.
Your time is up, please rest.
Yes. Please just think about the body that you're gonna be placing in our classroom and put yourself in the position, would you want that body working with your child? Thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak? Okay, can we have some of those answered questions?
Sure. Madam President, if I could just may, as a general proposition, as I said at the outset of the public comment period, some of the questions and comments that were made cannot be answered by the board, cannot be answered by the administration due to certain confidentiality issues, personnel-related issues, and/or negotiability issues that are more appropriate for negotiations between the majority representative, teachers for the paras, and the administration board that set. Just starting from the last point that was made, I'll move away through. Et cetera, an outside vendor, those issues will be addressed in the RFP. There's a scope of services, a specification of services that will likely, like any other RFP, the board puts out, have a level of expectations, training, experience, certification, et cetera, that the vendor will have to provide and/or certify that if and when they are awarded a contract, the staff that they provide to that contract have the requisite skill, training, experience, license, service required. It is a step-by-step process. The board did not award a contract to any vendor tonight. The board did not award a contract to a substitute secretary, paraprofessional, or teacher tonight. The board did not hire a long-term or a full position tonight. All the board did tonight was start the statutory process, which is a prerequisite, which is passing a resolution to authorize the administration to advertise an RFP request or proposal. That's all it did. The administration will put together an RFP, will put together specific services, will advertise that in accordance with the law, and vendors, I mean, will respond if they're interested. For all we know, nobody could respond or may respond. The board is utilizing the process that allows us to bundle these three services for substitute teachers, substitute secretaries, substitute paraprofessionals, as well as the hard-to-build full-time positions if and when necessary, to not be intentional of the board to privatize or outsource or anyway get rid of the existing employee population. However, the process that it allows, allows the board to combine those three for purposes of competitive contracting, so quite frankly, price is not the only limiting factor. If the board did it singly through a bid, which it would be required to, if it did a bid separately for paraprofessionals, it will be required to utilize the lowest responsible bidder, which would thereby require to take the lowest price. This gives the board some options to have price being one factor among others, seeing the best qualified entities, the best qualified people perform the service, when as you indicate or per the superintendent indicate, on a daily basis, there are nearly a dozen, if not more, students who are not being provided with a paraprofessional to provide coverage. So that's the issue. Tonight was the first step. There will be subsequent meetings and issues if and when vendors respond, they are qualified, and if and when it's a recommendation for this reward. So again, tonight is just the first step. Thank you.
Okay, before I have a motion to adjourn, I just want to remind the public that we do appreciate your service and we have heard everything you've said tonight, and I thank you, each and every one of you, for having the guts to get up and speak. We do listen to it, and when we vote on these things, remember that we are moms and dads and grandmas and grandparents of the kids in this school system, and we do vote on these things with our children in mind. I vote on these things as if I was voting for them for my children. And I just want you to take that into consideration when you think about what we're doing up here. That's all. I need a motion to adjourn this evening. Discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Absentee?